Thank you again for joining us. Thank you all for coming in. The Columbian is pleased to welcome candidates for Evergreen Public Schools School Board, representative from District Five. I'm Greg James, editorial page editor, and I believe you've met the other board members. And just so you know, reporter Katie Gillespie is sitting in. She won't be asking questions in this form, but might want to speak with you later. And I should mention that there is a fourth candidate in this position, Jane Staylor, who declined our invitation to join us today. So that's why he's not here. And finally, so you know, we are videotaping this. We will post it unedited on our website for benefit of our readers. So we will get to specific policy questions in a little bit, but let's start with an introduction. Take just one to two minutes to introduce yourselves, give us some brief background, and explain why you were running for this position, and we'll start at this time.
Okay, I'm Janelle Swaminen, and a little bit about myself is I have three girls currently in the school district. They're five, seven, and ten. The younger two are special needs. The oldest ones, advanced. I've worked a lot in the schools, in the front lines with the teachers and the students. I was PTO fundraising coordinator. I was briefly with Jenny on the foundation board, parent advisory committee with our FCRC, United Art Discovery.
Great, thank you. Jenny?
My name's Jenny Grunwald. I as well have children within Evergreen Public Schools. I have two children of my own, a twelve-year-old, well, who's going to be twelve at the end of the month, going into middle school, so I'm having a little anxiety over that. I have a first grader, my daughter's seven, and then I have my three-year-old nephew that I have guardianship of and working towards adoption. I have been on the PTA for five years now. I served on the Evergreen School District Foundation for six years, the last two years as president. I actually resigned my position effective June 30th to run for Evergreen School Board due to conflicts of interest. So it's kind of new for me. As of Saturday, I am no longer a foundation member. I also serve on the Educational Opportunities for Children and Families Board. Currently as past chair, I've been on that board for six years. Teach classes within the Evergreen and Vancouver Public Schools with Junior Achievement. Have been doing that for about eight years. I have also recently spearheaded with the Police Activities League to get two more PAL programs within our middle schools and actually mentored at our Frontier Middle School PAL program. I chose, decided to run for the school board, Position Five. Mike Parsons is, as you guys know, is retiring, and I wanted to put my hat in and make a bigger impact on the district than I already have in my smaller halls.
Great, thank you.
Park, a busy lady. I'm Park Lefay, and we have two children in the district. Evan, who's sixteen, at Mountain View High School, and my daughter Ellie just graduated just a few weeks ago from Mountain View. And my wife also is employed in the district as a piano accompanist for Evergreen High School and Mountain View. For the last ten years, though, I've been involved as PTO president at Eltwitt Elementary for a year, Y East Middle School as the president for three years, and also has served in the past with the Evergreen School District Foundation Board as their fundraising and emptying garbage cans guy. I've also been fortunate to serve as the Neighborhood Association with the Vancouver Heights Neighborhood Association, and that's really what got me started in volunteerism about fifteen years ago, and realizing that I could be a part of something and help do something in my community. We've been fortunate to have a great experience with the district, and you know, I think that's why I joined ten years ago. I said, you know, I've been a good, been a product of a great education, public education, my children and my family, and I want to see that go on to other children as well, those left fourteen. And we have a great district. Mike Parsons has certainly been a good friend of mine since Eltwitt worked, so look forward to representing myself today with the other two and five ladies. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, and again, thanks to each of you for joining us. Let's start with the legislature last week finally passed a state budget. What are your thoughts on that? What impact will the school funding have on the Evergreen District? And do you have a sense, do you think does this meet the state's mandate under the McLeary ruling? We'll start with Park.
Greg, I think that's a great, you know, always these things are tough. These budget battles are tough, and everybody has their own stake in the game. But again, because of McLeary's decision, the state did have to come to a point of reconciliation that we are going to fund public education, and so that they're taking the strides to do that correctly. So what we're seeing is the way, and I'm not sure if there's been a full analysis yet of the budget that's come out, but to see that we are going to adequately fund our education is great. I think our district has lived well within its means. Evergreen Public Schools, under John Dieter, who just retired, and Mike Merlino, cut $26 million, they, of themselves, and in doing so, they reduced classroom sizes. They instituted all-day kindergarten. We have one of the lowest central office and administration costs in the state. And you know, when you look at a district that has been good stewardage of what necessarily not been given to them, I give them a lot of applause for that. So this, to be able to have adequate funding is the first time, I think, that we should be able to start making some significant strides in our education. I think it's going to, one of the benefits, it's going to lessen the tax burden on our folks in Clark County. And I think we still continue to struggle in Clark County, though I think there's an uptick in what's been happening as far as job growths and everything, but we still need all the help we can get. So I look forward to see how it, as they say, how the cookie crumbles.
I just reiterate a lot of what Park said. Thanks for taking all of the credit on that. Thanks. I think with the passing of the McLeary budget and bringing it out, there's still a lot of things that aren't clear, a lot of things that we're not really sure about how it's going to be. What they're talking about is that we're funding education, but we're increasing taxpayers, the income of the tax amount on their property up to, I think it was like two point, I can't remember the exact amount. With the current levy, that is the intention is to reduce that over time as well. So I guess I'm just waiting to see more definitive information on it to see. I think that it is, it's a finally, finally, they've done something, and they're working towards it. I don't think that it's polished enough. I don't know that it's going to be sustainable moving forward. I think that at this point, it's going to get us through, I believe, the next three years, and at that point, back to the drawing board, but I really would like to see additional information on it before I give my complete thumbs up or thumbs down.
Great, thank you.
I'm being third. I agree a lot of what they say, too. I don't know how well the agreements they have come to are going to play out. It's kind of hard to know until you see it playing out, you know, in factable, you know, the situation, because things can look good on paper, and then when you go to put them forward, it doesn't always go as planned. So I, like Jenny, would like to see more detailed information about the different stuff, the numbers, and how they plan to make them work, and see how they're working before I say I love it or I hate it.
Could I give to follow to your question? One of the things that McLeary is doing, of course, in principle is to sort of shift the burden of the finances from local communities to the state, and essentially, McLeary, if anything, is saying that the state has the responsibility to fund education. And as Park, as you, I think, noted at least most clearly, there is this feeling among some people that, okay, as the state takes on more of the burden, local governments, local school districts should logically take on less of a burden. So the question that I have is, is anyone here willing to commit at this point to basically saying money that taxpayers, local taxpayers, have to dig out of their pockets to fund school districts? Will there be less money coming out of their pockets based on McLeary from a local taxpayer standpoint? Is anybody willing to commit to the idea that you agree that there should be less money given from local taxpayers now that McLeary is in place?
Well, I think, Lou, that it's, again, it comes to allocation. So if we're, and I'm sure that the follow-up question is in your notes, it's a bond. I mean, Evergreen, Vancouver's just passed their bond, I think it was a little over $400 million. Camus has passed the bond, Masurul's passed the bond, and Evergreen is potentially going to put a bond out to the voters.
Operation, let me clarify.
Correct.
Let me talk about it.
And I mean, and it's a significant bond. And so, yes, on somewhat, on some degree, some of that operational dollars for teacher salaries and that kind of thing has been shifted to the state. The local taxpayer is going to be hit with a significant bond.
Well, let's just deal with the operational part.
Right. Well...
Will you get, will they be getting, will they have to dig into their pocket less operationally now that the state is taking over?
Correct.
And so you can commit to that?
Yes.
Okay.
In theory, I would like to say yes. Unfortunately, we don't know the exact amount that's going to be allocated. I believe, I don't think they've come out with it. I haven't seen it where, what is going to each district, what is going to be paid for, what is not going to be paid for. So in theory, I would like to say yes, that less is coming from the local community, but in essence, a lot of the funding for it is coming off of our properties, our property taxes.
Right.
So all in all, we are paying for it locally.
So you can't commit to that?
Not with the way that it currently stands.
I would like to see less money come out of our taxpayers' pockets. At the same time, I am in complete agreement with the current board with the bond, because a lot of our schools need to be remodeled, you know.
Well, that's, I'm talking about operationally.
Yes. The other thing that popped into my head is the what-if question about DeVos and the vouchers and the charter schools, because if she starts doing that and taking money away from our schools, too, that will then factor in as well. But yes, I would like to see less money come out of our taxpayer pockets. It's not always possible, but you know, we don't, we don't, we can't, us three, we can't foresee, you know, the next four years while we're on the board, what's going to happen and what's not going to happen. We can say that we'll fight not to have more taxpayer money come out.
So at this point, you can't commit to it?
There's no, I would like to see less money, but there's no guarantee. We can't say we're guaranteed, because again, each one of us by ourselves is one vote, and we can't overthrow the entire board to make something happen either.
Personal commitment. You didn't have to speak for the board.
Yeah.
You could speak for yourself.
Personally, I would like to see less money come out of taxpayers' pockets, yes.
And let's move on, Nate, since you brought up federal education efforts, and I didn't much talk about vouchers, which would, which could possibly kind of remake the entire public school system. What are your thoughts on that? Are vouchers effective? Would they be best for districts or students? What should be the benchmark? How should we decide whether or not to support that?
I personally do not agree with the voucher system. I've looked at private charter schools for my kids before. In the ones that I've researched that I won't name, they don't have any programs for kids that are in special education, but they do already have in place scholarship programs for kids who want to go there that can't afford it. So I feel that they already have the things set up, and I also feel that creating a bigger gap in the socioeconomic status of children based on who can go and who can't go is, would be negative for our community, because it turns into the haves and the have-nots, and the haves have everything, and what are we doing for the other kids who can't, just can't get there with vouchers or without? So I'm against the vouchers. I don't agree with it.
I am not in support of the voucher system either. I don't think that our state in federal dollars should be going to private education when the public education needs it as well. I saw an interview, I guess it was, a discussion yesterday on Facebook with DeVos, I think that's his name, in regards to she couldn't guarantee that there would be stipulations on that money going to charter or voucher schools that would not, that would say that they're not allowed to discriminate. So I can't be in support of taxpayers' money going to an education system that potentially could discriminate against students for whatever reason.
Thank you. Park?
It's a, it's one that I struggle with, because I've been, I was able to go to a private school when I was in junior high, and it was amazing. It was smaller class size, more individualized, and comparatively, when I did go from the middle school to high school, I was a year and a half ahead of my peers. And so it's about school choice, and so parents are having to grapple with that. What do you do with a child that temperament, style of learning is different than that of his peers? And they're struggling, and they're going, what do I do? The public school is not meeting my child's need. Do I have to go find a special ed tutor to go outside of what's happening here in the public school? So I love our district. I think that we're a top performer, but I think this is a trend that we, as a community, have to face. And there is no definitive data that would say charter schools or voucher schools are necessarily better than the public education. I looked at the Washington State Charter Association, and there's just a handful of charters, and most of them are in Seattle, and one in Spokane. None here, other than parochial private schools. So, and on one hand, as a parent, I'd say, yes, we have to look at school choice for families. It's not right for me to just say, well, no, we're not going to do that. That's a tough question we're going to have to face.
So would you favor expanding the charter school system throughout Washington?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
So can I ask a question? You've talked a little bit about special needs, I think a few of you. Can you rate the Evergreen School District on, grade them on how you think they are doing currently with kids with special needs, and one thing that you would do to improve the system? You can start.
I think that they're doing a really great job. The thing that I would improve is parent education regarding IEP meetings, because it's hard for them to do the best job they can for the student without the parents being involved as well. And if you're not used to those meetings, because you and I are used to, if you're not used to those meetings, it can be intimidating at times.
I'm sorry, what kind of meeting?
An IEP Individualized Education Plan meeting. So I think, I think that our special education teachers do a really great job, and I think that they have a harder time when the parents aren't involved in the process, because it's got to be every person in the child's life as a team, working for the child, you know? The parents often have those hidden pieces that they need to kind of work through things. So I think they're doing a great job. I think we can have more education for parents regarding meetings and different things, so that they're not, and it's not always that they're afraid to be involved, but it is intimidating. Sometimes it's scheduling or whatever, but they're usually pretty good with scheduling.
Okay, so what grade would you give them, the district right now?
I would say, from my own personal experience, I would say A+.
Okay. Jenny?
I can only speak from experience at the school that my kids attend. I unfortunately have not been involved in a lot of other special education programs within the district. Both of my children are on IEPs at their school, mostly for speech, but other issues. They both have severe ADHD, and so I have actually been an advocate since my son was diagnosed at the age of four and went into early intervention schooling. And so I have, which is why I got on the board for EOCF, was to be an advocate for my child and to learn the rules and maneuver through them, because it is intimidating. It is very, there's a lot of information, and if you don't know how to maneuver through the system, it's hard. For my experience with my kids at school, I think that I would have to give them an A+ as well, just because they are constantly there, they're constantly helping. My son has actually recently graduated from two pieces of his IEP to move on to a middle school, which, you know, he got a little certificate that he was graduating out of speech therapy and a couple other things. So I think that overall, they do a good job, and they truly love and admire our children as they grow through, go through school. So I think that with my experience, they're doing an amazing job.
Park?
Again, I cannot speak personally, as I do not have children who are in special needs, but I know that my time with Eltwitt Elementary, those teachers would come to me and say, you know, we need this kind of resource. Can you get me, and it was a blanket that was, it's a specially constructed blanket that's added, so that they can put around a child when they're, that they need that comfort. And you know, that's where, and I know when Jenny sat on the, on the foundation board, that's where the great thing of the volunteer parent organizations could come in and say, you know what, we can, we can help in that classroom. We may not have children, but we can help in that situation. And when you have that dialogue, when the teacher can come to a foundation or they can come to a PTO, say, this is the need we need. I'm sorry to say, we can write the check faster than the district can, and we can get that piece of equipment into that classroom. And so I think, again, our district does an exemplary job for what they do, but again, I think we also have to acknowledge the volunteer organizations and the community that comes and says, hey, we can help and get those necessary resources in the classroom.
Okay.
Now, along those lines, does every school within the district have the same level of resources as far as volunteer organizations or somebody being able to write a check?
That's a good question, Greg, because I think it depends on the principal. It depends on the strength of your PTO, PTA. There are some, there are some PTO, PTAs that are probably very, very thin. There are some where, and I really worked hard, let's get these, let's get these families and let's get them involved, and I really would try to say, you know what, you can make a difference today. You don't have to wait six months. You don't have to wait for a test result to come back. We can get necessary. So it just depends across, but we have amazing volunteer and band boosters and all that stuff. You're going to hear this a lot from me. All you have to do is look across the river to Portland Public Schools, and you see the disparity. We have a great community in our school in which families, businesses want to support the school and do what they can.
So for maybe some schools that don't have quite the same level of resources?
As much, correct, yeah. Some are fundraising monsters, you know.
And within a district, you're going to have some disparity, but can the board, what can the board do to try and level that to bring some of the other schools up?
Can I speak to that?
Police?
What's that?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
So the foundation gives out $30,000 in educational excellence grants every year, and those include wobbly chairs, anything to improve the education of the students. We have a grant cycle, and that money actually comes from, majorly from our gala every year. And then, so we have a grant cycle, the teachers, the librarians, everybody, any educator can submit a request on our educational excellence grants, and we have a committee that goes through them, and we, we fund all of it or the majority of it as we can. A lot of our money is put in towards the elementary schools for books or for special education systems that they may need. So anything that they might ask for, the wobbly chairs, a lot of the teachers have actually put Velcro underneath the tables for the kids with sensory issues. They can actually rub the Velcro, and it helps them kind of concentrate. So for those schools that don't have a strong PTA or PTO, the foundation is there as backup as well. We also give out an additional $10,000 in imagination grants, and those are for more imaginative education styles. We've given out, you know, musical instruments. We've done golf within elementary schools. It's a vast array of things, but we definitely look, and throughout the year, as they need, we also give the principals $300 for each school to use for either special needs kids or kids that are coming from poverty that may need them. They use those as they see fit. We only have a handful of guidelines and things that they cannot use the funds for, but anything else that they see a need, they're able to use that. So the foundation kind of tries to fill that gap.
So and do, are the funds given to those schools that really need the most, or is it kind of, are they dispersed kind of equally throughout the district?
They are dispersed as the requests come in. So some schools that don't need it don't apply for anything. Those schools that we see more often are the ones that have more of a higher need. We don't see a lot from, you know, certain schools like Billy Hanyu, or, because they have a very strong PTO, or I think their PTO. Some of the other schools that have strong PTAs, they don't, PTAs and PTAs, they don't request, because they don't need it. The PTA is paying for it. So we do a lot of funding at those kind of poverty-stricken schools, more than the other ones, but it's there for everybody. We don't look at what is their rate of free and reduced lunch. We don't look at any of that information. We don't ask those kind of questions. It is available to everybody in every school within our district.
So out of those, that $30,000 that you give, what's the number that is requested?
Ninety thousand.
It's actually, usually is about $80,000 to $90,000 in requests that we, that come in, and that's why we have a committee that actually sits through the requests to see, does it apply, does it not apply? We also have a lot of schools that will ask for technology, and we've had to, in the past couple of years, decline any technology requests, because this district is going to a one-to-one technology, as well as if it's a program that the district can't support. So anything that is donated or given to the schools has to be then supported by the district in the end, and they have to approve anything like that. So we do dwindle a lot of that stuff out. We actually have two administrators that sit on the committee, so that they're able to kind of help us say, yeah, we're already working towards that, or we're already going to fund that, don't worry about it. So then we just explain to, send back a note to the school and just say, this is coming. It's not going to be funded by us, but you have our word, it's coming. And so we're able to kind of bring it down a little bit more, and then we do what we can. We usually try, you know, if we say we're going to support $2,500 in library books, all of the schools that have asked for new library books will only get $2,500 of whatever it is they ask. If they ask for $2,500, they're going to get their full request. If they ask for $6,000, they're only going to get $2,500. So we try to make it fair across the board. Long drawn out. Explanation.
It's instructive. It's helpful. So I'm curious, there's a lot of discussion nowadays about teachers' unions, and what role they should play, how, how much power they should wield. What are your thoughts? What role, how influential should the teachers' union be upon the board, and how should those two organizations work together in terms of that?
I think that they should be able to communicate with each other, at least have open communication, and be able to talk about things without it getting to... and be able to talk about things without it getting to um, a situation maybe like before, with the contracts, this, you know, the beginning of this last year. Um, you know, it's not a perfect world and things happen, but I think that um, that if both sides were open to communicating more, that things might go a little smoother.
Uh, last year, which side do you think maybe should have given a little more? The board or the teachers' union?
Well, in the situation they were in, they both, both parties had representatives doing the um, contractual stuff. I was out with the teachers, you know, but then I had had a conversation later and found out that I maybe didn't know all of the information, which I didn't wanna go into. So I think as a community member, it's important to keep an open mind that there might be things going on, on all sides, that you're not afraid to.
Jenny, first, union, school board?
Um, being a, a part of the foundation and being as highly involved with the administrators and with the district, um, I actually was quite disappointed in the way that the contracts happened last year. I think the tactics that were done, eh, mind you, in the past, the teachers' union, the EEA, and the school district have had a pretty good working relationship. Respectful, they come to the table, um, they may not always agree, but they have respect for each other in going through their negotiations. I think last year the tactics were a little too much on the part of the EEA. I think that there were some scare tactics that were put in place and some bullying. And I know from that has, eh, and mind you, I have teachers in my family, so I strongly support all of them. And I love my teachers, but I think that the way that things happened last year was, was not very professional on the EEA's part. I know that because of that, it has also um, put the district at a point that they are now being transparent with everything. So every negotiation, every discussion is now going on their website for everybody to see.
Well, yes, I, I think that it, it's always, the, these times are always tough, but children have to come first, first and foremost. And I, I, again, I, uh, my perception was that the union was strong-arming the district. And I think that when that starts to happen, that starts to fragment the community. Now you're asking the community to choose sides. I believe our teachers should be paid well. Uh, they certainly deserve it. But again, it's a fine line that when collective bargaining starts to take hold, um, all you have to do is look at the state of Illinois. Two-hundred-and-fifty-one billion dollars the state employees have saddled the state of Illinois with. And nobody has said that it has to stop. So it, it's tough. It really is tough, because like I said, my wife works for the district. I might be sleeping out in the garage for a while when contract talks come out. But um, we, we all have to live with what we, what we can have, what we, what is given to us. And so, um, uh, it, it was, it was hard. I, I think there was a change in leadership with the union, uh, this past year. Uh, I think that the past president did a, a fantastic job and was proactive and really worked hard, uh, to, to, to make life livable, so.
If um, somebody lived in a bomb shelter for the last fifty years and came out to see what it is that school systems and school districts are now doing, and what a teacher's role now is compared to fifty years ago. I suspect it'd be a little bit surprised about what's at play here. Uh, what school districts do, you know, everything from taking responsibility to make sure that the children who come to the school are fed properly, uh, disciplinarians, uh, psychologists. Uh, there's a lot that is going on today that people who went to school fifty years ago probably didn't see. Are school districts biting off more than they can, than they can chew? And should there be a hard look at sort of honing in on what teacher responsibilities are and try to alleviate some of these other scenarios that are going on?
Okay, Lou, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the question correctly.
Um, we do a lot more than we used to do. Teachers do a lot more than they used to do. Are they biting off more than they can chew today? Should we try to focus a little bit more so that teachers can teach?
Correct.
Uh, you know, every, like I said, everything from, hey, you're, we're responsible now for feeding
Yes.
the children today. Nobody's gonna say that's a bad idea. But the point is that the, the burden has fallen onto the school systems. Disciplinary issues have apparently been more for teachers than parents than fifty years ago, all that kind of thing. Uh, should we focus in? Are we biting off more than we can chew?
You know, I, I was thinking of that and I was, I was thinking the, we, we did, the Evergreen Public School did the stuff the bus, school supply thing. And I thought, you know, it, it reminds me now today, it seems like the climate, education climate. When I think of a school bus, it looks like these buses that you see in India. Everybody's packed on. Chickens are in there, animals are in there, every, and they're just hanging on for dear life. And, and, and it's true. How can, how can the business of doing school be that sharp when um, the rules are changing from the federal level? Here, here we have no child left behind is, is then replaced now with the Ever, uh, Student Succeeds Act. And then, and then that changed because it's partisan. And then the state does their thing. The, the office of superintendent, he, he wants a certain set of things done. And then I have my own local students who are struggling with poverty, homelessness, um, abuse. Um, how about the, how about just the, the student that's in the middle of the road? That's a C and a B and they're, and they're struggling to go, what am I gonna do? What, what's my, so now we, we've got, okay, so we've got some different pathways of education. Now it's college, now it's a trade school, and we keep adding and we keep stuffing. And you're right, at what level, and I think that really comes down to the school board. When is the school board gonna say, "You know what? State, you need to take this on." Again, we have great partners. We have SHARE, who's come along to help with, with uh, needs and, and the backpack program. But I, I think that's where the school board's gonna have to make some tough decisions and say, "This bus can't take any more uh, special needs," if you wanna call it that.
I'm seeing chickens now.
You're seeing chickens?
Um, yes, I would have to agree that we have definitely um, taken on way more in the schools than the teachers really should have to deal with. They should be able to concentrate on, on teaching the students and getting them advanced and, and worrying about their education and not worrying about, you know, does so-and-so have holes in their shoes? Did they eat breakfast? Did they get to lunch? Are they having behavioral issues? You know, do, there's kids that need to have that one-on-one time too, that you've got students that are having meltdowns in the middle of the halls and their paraeducators having to come out and grab them and trying to, you know, it's taking three or four s- teachers to try to help calm one child down.
What can you do about it?
There's, unfortunately, I don't know that there is a whole lot that we can do. It is the way that our society is now. If we, if we sit here and say, yes, it is a problem and yes, we want to stop it, what are we gonna, I mean, our options? We stop worrying about the backpacks that they take home on the weekends, and then these kids are not eating all weekend. We take the para, you know, the paraeducators out and we say that these are now their parents' responsibility. Well, they're not getting an education then. They're not getting the support that they need. So ultimately, yes, it is a problem, but I think that it is a problem that we have taken on, because we want to see every child succeed.
And you don't see, yeah, okay. So in other words, I don't really see a way out of these responsibilities that we've taken on?
Not at this time, no.
And some of the, some of the responsibilities, like the food and stuff, we've put FCRCs into the schools. And so, um, at Endeavor, it's Carmella and she's the one who will deal with issues, if kid doesn't have shoes or if they need an extra snack or whatever. So at that point, it's not necessarily the teacher that's having to stop instruction time to deal with it, because the kids can go in on their recesses or when they go to lunch and talk to her and take care of some of those things at that time. But I agree, it's, I don't, we've taken it on and, but the whole world's a different place than it was fifty years ago too. Everything's changed, not just the schools themselves, so.
So the FCRC is the, is the resource council?
What's the F?
The Family Community Resource Center? And fourteen of our schools have it, not all of them.
So what, what, the schools that don't, or they, they just don't need one, or?
They're not Title I schools, so yeah, their free and reduced rates are higher than the Title I requirement. And so we don't have um, FCRCs in those schools. I believe there's seven that don't have them.
So, I'm confused. So the ones that need them the most don't have them?
No, the ones that need them the most have them. The ones that don't have them are the ones that are at a certain free rate or a higher
Okay, got it.
non-free and reduced lunch, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Thanks for clarifying.
Is that determined solely by the free and reduced lunch level or are there other factors?
There's probably other factors that make them a Title I school, but because they're a Title I school, they get additional support um, on the, from the government to be able to provide uh, these services, as well as the foundation acts as the five oh one C three for any of their donations, any of the money that's coming in from donors, local donors. I do know that all of our high schools also have pantries in them, and that allows students to go in and get toiletry items, um, food as needed. We pack over a hundred and forty, I believe, Thanksgiving boxes for students to take home, and the, the pantries are ran by the foundation. And we're actually working to get those into the middle schools right now as well. We have Frontier started one, and I believe one other middle school has started one and we're gonna move into that.
The Title I funding that's federal, right?
Right.
Great. Uh, actually, this has all been very informative, but um, I think we'll move on now. Give us your final pitch uh, for why voters should support you. And please mention any notable endorsements you would like to share. We'll start with you now.
Okay, so my final pitch. Um, my endorsements are the EEA, WEA, um, the Central, Southwest Washington, Central Labor Council, and um, oh my gosh, I'm blanking.
Well, I wouldn't look at my opponent before I put my endorsement.
She doesn't feel like an opponent though, because we've been, we've worked together before.
That is the hardest thing, is we've all
Yeah.
worked closely together.
Well, use your final pitch.
Yes. Um, my final pitch is I'm a mom with kids in the district. I've been in our school day in and day out working, so I've kind of seen the front lines of different things. Um, and one of my biggest things is communication, so people feel like they can have a voice on the board without being on the board themselves.
Thank you, okay.
I, um, again, I, I ran for this position because my persons is retiring. Um, and I, I felt that it was time for a new perspective, a younger perspective. I have great respect for all of the EPS board members. They've been around for a very long time. But I also think that a lot of them have either graduated their kids out of the district um, or have older kids in the district, and it's time for a, a fresher perspective coming from elementary, middle school grade levels and on up. So it gave me a perfect, perfect opportunity to just kind of step in and run for a board position. I believe that I'm qualified to do the position, having been a part of the Evergreen School District, um, the foundation for the last six years, working closely with the FCRCs, the board members, the administrators, the teachers, um, being there as, as they needed it, as well as being a PTA mom of, of two um, special needs kids. I don't usually like to refer to them as such, but they are. Um, I do not have any uh, company-wide endorsements, but I have received quite a few personal, personal level endorsements, including um, Mayor Tom Lovett, Larry Smith, Jack Burke, Manalisha Topper, a lot of the current elected officials, uh, which I've had the pleasure of making great relationships with over the years.
Great, thank you. Mark?
If I wasn't running, I would vote.
Thanks, Mark.
I've been fortunate to, to uh, serve as a volunteer parent on, on some volunteer board and make a difference. My children, both have been benefited from the highly capable programs. My daughter was able to do running start and um, she is, we've taken two years off of her college, which has saved significant money. That only comes from vision um, into the future for students. And I think you're absolutely right, Lou. How do you, how do you try to contain all of these different elements into one, one organization? And again, I think that um, what do I bring to the, what can I bring to the school board? Is that, that ability to work with teachers and administrators and say, you know what? There's different ways to slice the pie here. Yes, I'd like to have all of this, but we may have to wait. We may have to do it in stages. Because we can't lose the, the essential fundamental focus of educating our children. Uh, that, that must come first. We have to, you know, come back to our, our state representatives and say, you know what? You need to be feeding our children. I can't feed our children. You need to make sure they have a proper breakfast. So, again, I, I come to, A, my daughter has gone through, we've experienced the district. And, and it's an amazing, it's not, but I've got any great fresh ideas that are just going to, to, to change it. But I do think that the, the charter schools are something that we are gonna have to look at. We cannot be afraid to look at alternative choices. Again, public education is great, but we can't say, well, if it's not broken, you know, we, we just sit on our head. We, we must be continually striving to do better. And that's not a negative thing to say, we can do better. Um, again, I look right across the river. I work in Portland. And I tell people, I go, "Why do you live here? Move to Vancouver. It's better in Vancouver." And, and um, the disparity that's happening in Portland Public School, the chaos that happens at PTF, you have to go to more affluent communities, like Oswego, Westland, parts of Beaverton, to get the graduation rate that we have. Portland proper, Portland uh, public school proper, sixty-eight percent graduation rate. We're at eighty-four percent and as high as ninety-three percent within the district. That's amazing. So, so again, our district has done a fantastic job. I applaud them. And I, I feel that I can continue to, to, to make it better.
Great, thank you. Thanks still.
Thank you.